No.
It was like the dump.
Great.
Look at, look at.
The poignant looks.
We're serious tonight. Call the regular city commission meeting Tuesday, September 10th, 2019 to order. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amy, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Crizziak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Here. We're all here. First item on the agenda is public discussions, items not on the agenda. Anybody has anything to bring forward? I won't call on you. Those in the back row hiding? Okay, next item, governmental reports.
I'm gonna go first.
Okay.
So I can show my distinguished colleague how it goes. Acting fire chief, Pat Cachet, has his interview tomorrow, so he left at 5:00 to prepare.
Cool.
So Captain Doug came and he's standing in.
We all hope for the best.
How did he get here?
I don't know, I don't see any...
Fire truck blocking our lot or whatever.
A big ladder dropped him. So, just a couple of small things. I mean, Dream Cruise went off without a hitch, obviously. That's all good. We had no issues or whatever. The Ford group that used the parks or whatever were fantastic. The Broncos, I hope I ever got a chance to go see them.
That was super cool.
There was a lot of good... Being a former Bronco owner was cool to see. A lot of good cars. I tried to get one when trying to buy, but I don't think it's gonna happen. School has started again, so for everybody that traveled and traverses Ridge Road and Pinecrest, know the times between like 10:00 to 8:00 in the morning, 8:15. They start at 20:00 to 3:00 to pick up and through to about 3:20, so try to avoid that area. It's congested, it's school, it's not really made for that kind of vehicle traffic volume, so we do what we can to keep it safe. There's been a lot of larceny from vehicles in other cities, not ours, so again, reminder, lock your doors, your windows, your garage doors, your homes, so nobody can gain entry. Oh, Woodward Heights, getting a lot of complaints about the traffic on Woodward Heights due to all the construction going on, mostly in Ferndale. We have only through residents' traffic, there's no through traffic, it's posted. We're getting a lot of complaints from residents about that, so we're out there enforcing, Ferndale's enforcing also. If you can find an alternate route all day and every day till it's done, that would be appreciated. I know there's a lot going on with 696 in Woodward and Main, and then we've got cement things going on everywhere. It's like that everywhere in Michigan, it's the season, so we just bear with it. So, other than that, we don't have really anything else unless you have questions.
Any questions?
We do.
Do we know how long Woodward Heights is going to be sort of closed to residents?
So the project is scheduled to go through November.
And I don't know how long the traffic control will be because Ferndale tells me things and then that's kind of ends up being a meaningless date. So I'm not even... When traffic was closed in the other direction and I told some people, okay, well, yeah, it's supposed to, you know, be restored next week, and then it was two and a half weeks after that, so I'm not... I don't know. I offer no guidance on that.
So Woodward Heights may be closed through November?
It may be.
And then open to residents only? And then we'll have our project going on on Woodward Heights during that time, too?
I... Well, I was gonna talk about that later, but I think we have to punt on that until this spring.
It's gonna be like this, yeah.
Because we... Today, we actually went out and closed Woodward Heights at Woodward because we were getting everybody... I don't understand the thought process, but people are driving past three sets of barricades that said "road closed" and continuing into the construction zone in the wrong direction. We ran out of ticket paper.
Paper.
And the car was writing so many tickets out there.
Wow. And there were police cars with lights out, driving around.
Still.
And I'm just trying to get to Drifters for coffee or Heights Market or something. And I want people to go there, but you're having an alternate route.
Right. So, yeah, so we had to put the barricades and close Woodward Heights at Woodward to try to prevent people from even turning onto the street, so...
So are you saying we have to maybe delay our test?
Yes, because the barricades that we have at Bermuda and Indiana to close the street to get people to not go, or at least to try to get people, that's where the tests are supposed to go.
Okay.
So now we have traffic control where the traffic calming tests are supposed to go.
Okay.
So...
Will we still be putting in some of the things like the painting?
The striping?
The striping and the...
We're gonna try, yeah. The ed striping, I've been waiting on again, that's another thing that...
Yeah.
Next week?
Excellent.
Nope. Next week, we mean it this time. Nope, nope, really, next week. So I don't know when PK's gonna be out to do that.
The only vendor? Well, we sure know it'll slow down the traffic.
Right. So, again, you know, we'll figure out how to get that in place, but hopefully that'll be in place this fall so that in the spring, we're ready to go, because that's what we've been waiting for.
Okay. Great.
So that's unfortunate. We're gonna send a letter to everyone at Woodward Heights, just updating them on that.
Good. Thank you.
Guess that's it. Thank you.
And briefly, from the fire department, say how thrilled we were to participate in the 100-year celebration at the park the other day. It was wonderful and we were glad that we were able to be there and celebrate it with you.
Yay. Wanted to thank you, it was wonderful.
We're looking forward to participating in many future events with you.
It was fun sitting in the truck.
I agree.
Pretty cool. All those dials and things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. No, we're good.
I have one more.
Yes.
So we're gonna take this opportunity now to introduce and reintroduce, I guess, our recreation department. So we have some news just on official and permanent positions there. So Shawnee has been made the permanent recreation director.
Yay.
So she excelled in the role and there was no need to look anywhere else other than here for that. And then we've also hired a new assistant recreation director, so now we're back up to full staffing level, thank goodness. But I'd like to introduce Greg Kalback. Greg, why don't you come on up? So Greg came to us from Troy at their Parks and Recreation Department, and we're glad to have him on board. Greg, you wanna tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yes, so like you said, I came from Troy, worked part-time over there doing recreation. So my background's in... I went to Michigan State for undergrad, I went to University of New Haven for grad school, so I've worked in a lot of different areas of recreation throughout my life and, you know, this is just sort of a really nice community to be part of, so... And I live in Ferndale, so it's really close.
Cool.
So it's really... It seems like it's gonna be a really good fit for me, so I'm excited to be a part of it.
We're excited.
Excited, yeah. Shawnee, I am sure.
We're not, yeah.
Could've come at the beginning of summer now.
Yeah. Tell us about it. Well, Greg is gonna be going and getting a certified pool operator certificate.
Good girl.
All right.
And Greg's gonna be looking into new options for pool furniture?
Yes.
So we'll be plotting and planning for that.
Plotting and planning, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
We're excited.
Great, all right. No other governmental reports, we'll move on to the commission liaison reports, starting with Commissioner Wall and the recreation commission.
Hello.
Hello. How are you?
I'm good. Let me tell you what's going on. Monthly movie, Thursday, September 19th, Rocket Man, Elton John Story, 12:15 and 6:00 PM. Atavia, Wednesday, September 25th, $6, Lunch Is On Your Own, they'll be playing bocce ball.
That's fun.
Yes, folks, it's flu shot season, flu shots. Thursday, October 3rd, from 1:00 to 5:00. DIA tour, Thursday, October 3rd, free event, limited to 10 registered guests. Youth trip to see your point, Saturday, October 19th, 7:00 AM to midnight. Cost is $90 for 6th to 12th graders. It sounds fun.
It's fun, we have a good time.
Halloween movie in the park, to be determined. Hope it's something good and scary. 25th, CD begins at 6, movie begins at 6:30, concessions will be sold. Toddler Halloween party, all time cutest thing ever. Saturday, October 26th, 10:00 AM, 3:00 PM per kid, rec center. Halloween hayride, everyone's favorite. Saturday, October 26th, from 3:30 to 5:30 at Gainesboro Park. Am I allowed to say what food we're having? See preview?
Take it for her.
Yeah.
Hunter House.
Nice.
Do the math on that, it's gonna be awesome. Okay, so that will be amazing. Fall Halloween house decorating, which is new this year. Email Greg, who just introduced himself, callback@gcallback@cityofpleasantridge.org by 10/20. Send a picture of your home and your address and you could win. I don't know what you'll be winning, but that's to be announced. And then I wanna talk about the 100-year party, which was a huge success. Over 300 people came.
Wow.
Families, single people, all kinds of everybody, and from what I heard, I couldn't be there, my best friend got married that day, but everyone had a really great time.
Yeah, it was, it was great.
Tree Dreams Sold Out Of Ice Cream.
Oh, that's cool.
It's a sign of success. So it was great, but thank you for all your work. I have a lot of people participating, making that really cool, but that's all I have.
All right. Any questions? Thank you. Commissioner Crizziak, Ferndale Public Schools?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The beginning of the school year was uneventful, a lot of excitement, not too much drama except around drop-off, and hopefully we're working on smoothing that out. It seems to be a rite of passage every year and it takes a little bit, so appreciate the patience on that and the cooperation. The first thing I wanna talk about is the bond survey. It's an important part of a bond question that will be put to the residents of this community in March of 2020. So the Ferndale School Board, the superintendent, and a group of consulting residents and other stakeholders have focused on garnering citizen input on the priorities for the upcoming bond. Now, this will be a zero-mill bond proposal, which means it'll just be an extension of the current bond, and it looks at raising $125 million over six years. So this will be money that would be going into the infrastructure of the school district, so classrooms, buildings, improvements of that sort. So it's really important that we get residents to weigh in as far as their priorities. Another big question that is going to be... It's part of this survey, there'll be an ongoing discussion, and that's the future of two properties. One is Roosevelt Elementary School, which is here in Pleasant Ridge, and the other is Casa, which is over on that Oak Park-Ferndale border. The school district is really interested in hearing residents' attitudes about the future of both those structures. As we all know, Roosevelt is a really important part of this community, it has been since it was constructed, and so there's a lot of feelings. There's some investment that has to go into that building if it is gonna be continued use, so the school board, I really appreciate the fact that they're looking at getting resident input on this very important question. So, the bond survey can be found at the ferndalschools.org website, on their social media pages. I don't know what time it... I was trying to find out when it closes, but I know it's currently open, it's been open for about a week. If you're interested, I would fill out that survey as soon as possible. So that's number one on the list as far as the school district. I also wanna talk about... This is something that is close to my heart. I'm a union electrician, UAW electrician, and they're having a union construction apprenticeship night on Tuesday, October 1st, 2019. This will be at Ferndale High School, it'll start at 6:00 and it goes till 8 o'clock in the Commons. My life has been improved by being a union tradesperson. I know with three young children, we're looking at, you know, post-high school careers, and I think rightfully so, we're talking to our children now, both in our family and just generally, about the benefits of the construction trades. And one thing that's really exciting, I can tell you, the UAW, the IBEW, all these construction trades are really making an effort to diversify the rank, the rank and file. So we have apprentices from different ethnicities, we have women apprentices, which in a trade like construction, I can tell you, it's been very rare, but in the last five years, we've seen women come into the trades, you know, women who have been on the trades continue their careers. So just wanna get everyone aware of that opportunity. Again, that's gonna be October 1st at Ferndale High School at the Commons. There's also something that we wanted to talk about, the Ferndale Schools are launching a new communication system. So it's the Q Communications Page, there's a social media dashboard, it's a way for the schools, not the school board, but the district, to communicate and push messaging out. There's information on the website about their new efforts with communication. And I wanna finish with the Ferndale Education Foundation Annual Dinner and Auction, which will be hosted here at the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Center this Saturday, September 14th, starts at 4:00. It's $60, it'll be a live and silent auction, strolling dinner, beer and wine, and the theme this year is the Super Heroes Gala. So I know, just like the foundation event, you know, there's different themes year to year, this year will be the Super Heroes Gala. And in past years, I know it was a lot of fun, it was hosted... It has been hosted by Saban, who's this really spectacular drag queen and host and just really does a fantastic job energizing the crowd and making it for a very memorable night. So if the theme is superheroes and we have Saban as the host, I can't imagine like what's gonna be... It's gonna be really fun, a lot of fun. So again, that's this Saturday, September 14th, at the PR rec center. So, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Perry, planning, DDA?
Thank you, Mayor. The planning commission and DDA did not meet this past month, but we are meeting... They are gonna meet on Monday, September 23rd, for a special... For a special planning commission meeting to consider an application that the whistle stop has put in to expand their dining room. This requires a special land use approval, and so the planning commission will meet right here at 7:00 PM on September 23rd. So stop on by. And that's all I have.
That's it, thanks. Commissioner Scott, his story.
Hi, everyone.
You have a couple of things, right?
Yeah, a couple of things. Mark your calendars for September 21st, Saturday, 10:00, it's our annual home and garden tour, and should be a great time for everyone. It's a good time of the year to have the tour, everything will be nice and green and the ball colors will have just started. We have eight homes and gardens on the tour this year, and we recommend everyone just set aside the day to check out what people have done to their homes, and it's also a good opportunity to see how the neighborhoods have changed and how people have improved their homes over the last year. A lot has gone on over the last year, and the eight homes there on the tour should be great. Another thing I'll mention, the Pleasant Ridge Then and Now Committee has been meeting to update the Then and Now book. Some of you may be familiar with a book that was put together a couple of decades ago, actually, around the history of Pleasant Ridge. And we've taken all of the chapters apart and basically updated with new information we found, written some new chapters, and filled it with lots of information about the people from Pleasant Ridge and how the city was formed, some history about the region. We do have a request, though, there are three streets where we'd just like to find some folks that have lived on the street for a long time, that might be able to provide us some information about whatever block clubs might have existed and involvement with the city. That's Kensington, Millington, and Woodward Heights. I think we know somebody on Kensington that's been working on historical commissions, so we'll probably get that uncovered. But for Millington and Woodward Heights, if there's anybody out there that might be able to help us with some past information or some photos about those streets, that would be great. And we also suggest that if you know of people that were important in the past of the history of Pleasant Ridge, give us that information, you can reach out to me directly because we'd like to just put a little something in about these people that helped shape the city. And any pictures that you have are great as well. And that's the big news for the historical question.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, comments for... Okay. Moving on. Oh, and tiles, you wanna mention tiles just for a moment?
Totally forgot to mention it. We have created a 100-year tile, I should have had one here with me. They've come in, and absolutely beautiful four-by-six green tile. They're $50. We've ordered only 100 of them to celebrate the 100th year anniversary, and I think more than two-thirds are already sold out.
Sold 63.
63.
Good.
So if you're interested in the tile, come into City Hall and check it out. I got mine on Saturday, and it's amazing how nicely they turned out. There are also frames that can be ordered to surround the tile. Those are handcrafted frames from Poabik, and those are $100 each. So it's your choice to get a frame or not get a frame. In truth, I'll probably go to Michael's and pick my own frame, but... But the tile itself is just absolutely pretty, and it's funny to watch people shop for them. They're all a little different because they're hand-fired by Poabik, and they all have a little bit of different character, so some people took a little time to pick their tile. And it's interesting, so come on into City Hall and pick it up.
Cool.
Great. Thank you. Okay, next item is the consent agenda. Just to mention a couple of things, I'm not going to go into any detail, but one of the items is a resolution declaring September 21st, 2018, as POW/MIA Recognition Day, I believe, a flag goes. Do we raise a flag? Yes, do we?
Well, the flag is currently raised.
It's permanently...
Okay, so it's permanent, okay. Proclamation recognizing the week of September 15th as welcoming week in Pleasant Ridge. And finally, which I think is probably more important in these days of discussions around opioid addiction, is the resolution recognizing September as National Recovery Month. You know, that's all the news we hear in terms of problems with opioids and other addictions, and so it's very important, I think, that we recognize September as National Recovery Month. So now I'm gonna ask if there's a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Crizziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, city manager's report.
Yeah, so we talked about a lot of what I was gonna talk about already.
Sorry.
Good, well, there you go.
Which is good. I have nothing further.
I don't wanna see this.
You can touch something. That's it? That's all? Okay, moving right along. Any questions for the city manager?
Anybody?
We have ways to make you talk.
All right. Let's see. Greg, would you come up and do a PowerPoint? We need you. You didn't know that was... He was passing it on to you. Oh!
Dragged my memory. Because of PowerPoint. So say goodbye to our sort of basement...
I did that on purpose. See, you pick up on that.
The Abbott and Costello routine, right? Say goodbye to our homebrew basement technology because starting tomorrow, the city commission chambers is starting to be overhauled. So our October meeting is gonna be held at Four Ridge. If you're watching this on the cable channel right now, we are not going to be able to broadcast on the cable channel from Four Ridge. However, we are going to be... We've been working with CMN and we're gonna start to livestream the meetings through our YouTube channel, so we will have internet livestreaming back, and that will be, I believe, and I hope, and will get it to be a permanent way of broadcasting the meetings. So we'll also go back to broadcasting on the cable channel once we get back to this room in November, or maybe December, for the city commission meeting. And the reason for that is because all of the hardware and equipment and fiber lines are in this closet and we can't move them between facilities. So don't come here in October, we'll be at Four Ridge.
Cool. Good signing.
Yes.
Excuse me, Jim. So will Planning Commission be at Four Ridge also? Because that's in September.
That is an excellent question.
That is.
Performed for here.
Yeah.
Because this will be under construction.
Right.
Might be appropriate for planning commission.
Yeah. Well, we noticed it for here, so we have to hold it here, we may have to hold it in the conference room.
You better check that they took out a permit.
There is a permit.
Just wanna make sure, you know, when anyone...
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is other business.
I'll go.
Or Jason.
I just want... We hiked this up last month and then we didn't end up meeting. There were some circumstances that colluded against us, so we're gonna try again for Where the Crawdads Sing by Delia Owens next Wednesday at 7:00 PM at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center. We'll do our monthly book talk. We're also... We're gonna try and double up a little bit and try and catch up. So there's another book called Our Crowd, The Great Jewish Families of New York by S. Birmingham, that is also on our list. So if you wanna talk about Where the Crawdads Sing, if you have an interest in the history of New York City, we're gonna be all over the map next Wednesday, September 18th at 7:00 PM for the monthly book club discussion. And then up a little bit forward, Jazz by Toni Morrison in October, and we're open for suggestions, so if you're looking to get a book on the list, please email us and we'll put your book on the book club list, so... And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
Just a quick one. I may have neglected to say that for the home and garden tour, if you'd like to buy your tickets in advance, they're available here at City Hall, you can go online to get them as well.
Great. And are they $20 in advance?
$20 in advance and $15 if you're a docent.
Oh, $25 a day of the tour.
$25 a day of the tour.
Okay.
And online at cityofpleasantridge.org.
Yes.
Covers it all?
Very good.
Very good.
And then I have something, Mr....
Please.
I just wanna give everybody an update. There will be an election November 5th, two city commission seats, two people running for two seats. There is a library millage renewal question on there to continue library services, and then Oakland Community College has a renewal millage on there as well. Ballots will probably be coming in at the end of September. People that are on the absentee ballot list that receive applications will be receiving those soon. You don't have to have a reason to vote absentee, so if you'd like to vote absentee, just give me a call, we'll get you an application. And if you'd like to be on the permanent list for an absentee ballot, there's no restriction on that either. It used to be, there were some restrictions to that, now there's not. So if you'd like to just receive an application for every election, decide whether you wanna use the absentee ballot or not, if you wanna come on into the polls, you can do that. Just get with me at City Hall and we'll get you going. And this election for November, bear with us, because we have the e-poll books, we have We have electronic poll books now. So we won't have the paper books. We'll actually have the laptops. So Shawnee, who's the deputy treasurer, as well as, or the deputy clerk, as well as the recreation director, she and I will be going to training for the e-poll books. And then I'd be training the inspectors. So it might, you know, be a little bit longer if you come to the line while we're working through it. But I think it'll be a really good enhancement once we get it up and running and we're all used to it.
Now, do we have paper, paper backup?
We will have a paper backup. You always wanna have something for backup, but yeah, we'll have a paper backup.
Especially these days, yeah.
So we're thinking absentee.
Yeah, but you missed a cookie and you missed this.
Right. The application for the absentee ballot application, it will be going up on the website shortly. We'll get those all out there so people can just go to our website or you can go to michigan.gov. They have applications for absentee ballots on there as well.
Cool.
Just one thing, since we're talking about elections and things. I just wanted to take a moment to congratulate Dave Coulter. After a very strange set of circumstances. Dave was nominated and voted in as the new Oakland County exec. I expect a lot from him over the next 18 months. A lot of changes, a lot of ways of Oakland County more engaged, certainly around transit and a number of other diversity issues and things like that. So that's great. And also Dan Martin, who was selected to serve out the term for the rest of his year while they elect a new mayor in November. So with that, is there anything else for the good of? Look at us. I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna do it. We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
That's a wrap.